Meeting of the Town of Maryville Town Council is called to order at 6:36. Please rise for the invocation from Reverend Paul Anderson from First Presbyterian. Reverend Anderson here. Please rise for the invocation and continue to rise for the pledge of allegiance. Oh Lord, we gather before you. We thank you for the week of Thanksgiving. We thank you for believing in us as a community, the leaders and the residents of this town. During this week of Thanksgiving, we must remember, we're not only thankful for one day. We are thankful for the 365 days for everyone who has touched our life and for everyone that we have known to love in our past. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Spann?
Here.
Hardaway?
Yes.
Garalcheck?
Present.
Baron?
Here.
Pettit?
Here.
Whiting?
Here.
Miano?
Here. All seven present. Petitions, communications and remonstrations. Does anyone have anything on petitions or communications? Seeing none, the consent agenda. Council payable register voucher approval for November 25th, 2014, and also approval of the town council meeting minutes of November 12th, 2014.
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Spann. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven to zero. Moving on to standing committees, budget and finance, Councilman Garalcheck.
No report.
Public works, Councilman Pettit.
Madam President, I want to announce, and I see Chaz and Karen in the audience, 7030 Avenue will be closed just west of Tany Place beginning Monday, December 1st at 7:00 a.m. until Thursday at 5:00 p.m. The Lake County Surveyors Office will be replacing a 72-inch culvert underneath the street. Motorists are urged to use US-30 as an alternate. Matt or Bruce, I don't know if you have any other comments on that?
No, that pretty much covers it. Hopefully the work will actually get done by Wednesday evening, but you never know with the weather, so you always gotta give yourself an extra day. But this work is being done by the Lake County Surveyors Office through a contractor.
Okay. And are we on the last pass of leaf collection, Bruce? Are we just going back through town?
Yeah, we're on one, this is our last pass, but of course, we always go back one more time and get all the stragglers. And the way the weekend was, there wasn't really a whole opportunity for our residents to do any type of yard work, so we'll be going back through again next week.
And what are we doing with any of the punch list items on the paving?
I'm actually-
I know temperature's a concern.
I'm actually having a meeting with Washington Kelly about that tomorrow.
Okay.
I got one thing, Madam President. Snow, you know, we're getting into that snowy season. I'd like to remind all the residents and all of us that two inches snowfall, no street parking, those cars will be towed.
Yes.
You did it, you jinxed them now, Rich.
Yeah, now we're ready to go.
Yeah.
I started up my snow blower, it's ready.
That's all I have, Madam President.
All right.
Thank you.
Council affairs, Councilman Spann?
No report at this time.
Personnel policy and employed benefits, Councilman Garalcheck.
Yes, I talked to Forrest Financially, he said they came out and met with everybody with the open enrollment, so everything's moving forward with the insurance.
Very good. Public safety, Councilman Whiting?
No report, maybe.
Okay, I have one report. I have been working with City Floral. City Floral is a business in our town. They will be offering to our town employees a holiday arrangement for $25 each. All money generated by this sale will be donated to the Maryville Police FOP Memorial Fund to keep the memory of Officer Schultz alive. After all orders are in, I will be making the deliveries, and I wish to thank City Floral for their great generosity and their donations. Moving on to parks and recreation, Councilman Spann?
We talked to Taggy a little bit. I think we need to probably get some type of workshop so we can talk about the things he talked to us today about a little while ago. One thing is needed is a park board, whatever that is. It was a pretty interesting meeting. He's looking the direction of, I think he wants three large parks instead of these parks we got now. So there's some discussion that needs to happen because there's, you know, you get a large park, there could be some safety issues as far as kids, you know?
Oh, definitely.
Also, he's looking at staff, director and recreation supervisor.
Well, they will all be covered in our workshop.
Right, yes ma'am. Okay, that's a couple of things.
Okay, does anyone else-
Along those same lines, for the record, since Taggy's in the audience, you know, two weeks ago, we voted down the clean fill facility. However, we want to try and secure that, asking John to do something with the estate of Mr. Reinhardt, so that that's secured. After the meeting, I spoke with Matt a little bit about some type of passive park, stormwater resource facility, where we get that thing gated, John, and secured for the town under our control. Let's not forget that as an agenda item for the parks discussion.
I've got, I've got one more thing. A lot of what was discussed today is part of the park master plan, and they'll be holding a public meeting December 8th at the Prusen Center, that's a Monday, at 6:30.
6:00 p.m., I thought it was, 6 o'clock.
Okay, it says in the newspaper, 6:30, so it's gonna be 6:30.
Don't believe everything you read in the newspaper.
I got 6:00 p.m.
Oh, lie. Mr. Park?
Yes, it'll be the last public meeting for the master plan, which Don was referring to. What this meeting was about was a preliminary meeting with the park committee to go over the plan before they presented it to the public.
Very good. Anything else on the parks and recreation?
No.
I have one thing. Matt Lake and I will be meeting tomorrow regarding the Steffick Park area. We will be working together to design and also pick plants and trees to improve the environment and also the green space. Our continued plans include a raised garden, whether for vegetables or for flowers. It's gonna be a seating area for those who wish to engage in games of chess or checkers or for relaxed reading. That will be available the next spring for the residents of War III. And thank you, Matt, for your expertise, and also a thank you goes out to Janet Reed and also Nikki Witkowski from the Purdue Extension of Lake County. We will be working with them also. Environmental affairs, Councilman Garalcheck.
I'll defer to Matt Lake on that.
No report at this time.
All right.
Anything else under environmental?
Just the other day, when we were out there and met with the contractor about the culvert replacement, I had some pretty good conversations with their surveyor about going to the meeting of the, what is that called?
Which one, the Little Cal meeting?
Yeah, the Little Cal you meant, River Basin or whatever. And he's wholeheartedly supporting us to go with us to discuss, you know, some projects that we could partner with. And he believes that if we do go together and we partner, whether it be with Crown Point, Hobart or Sherrville or Gary, that, you know, we could probably get some stuff done through them.
Very good. Okay, moving on to elections and public relations. You know, this past week, week or two, we've been having really some cold weather. When I was driving through town and I stopped at a stop sign, I noticed a young mother gathering her children up to get them into a car as quick as possible. The two little ones were in very thin little sweatshirts. And the heraldous boy, I don't know, maybe about nine, 10, 11, he had a tee shirt on, and he gathered his hands and his forearms underneath his tee shirt to keep himself warm. There is a definite necessity in this town for warm clothing for the people who do not have it. So therefore, I am looking for jackets, hats, scarves, gloves, mittens to be given to Maryville residents in need. All items should be clean, they should be gently used, if not new, that would be great if we could have it. I'm asking that these items be delivered to the town, and on every Saturday, I will open the town hall from 10 to noon for drop-offs of these items, and also for the people that need it from 10 to 2 on every Saturday. It will be here. The community coat program, I'm sponsoring that through Maryville Senior Services. So anybody out there who has any clothing that the children have outgrown or feel it in your heart to, go to Kmart and buy a jacket.
Just children?
Anything and everything. We have people in need in this town.
Is this just strictly for Maryville residents?
Yes, strictly for Maryville, yes sir.
But it has to be for residents?
Yeah.
Madam President, was it 10:00 a.m. to noon or 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.?
No, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, every Saturday, and it'll be in the back room here. And hopefully, we could put some warm clothing on some of these children and some of the elderly. And that's my report under elections and public relations.
Madam President, couple of PR matters. Excuse me. Saturday night was the annual gala for the Crossroads Chamber. A lot of us were in attendance, and just for the rest, and I think it's being reported in the papers, and it goes without saying that obviously Nicholas Schultz was our Officer of the Year. Very heartfelt. We honored his mom and dad with that award. Scott Mulchan was the firefighter of the year.
No.
And we had a lot of good attendance. The second item that I wanted to bring up, and I just got an email about this, and I'll check into this at Lamar tomorrow. As many of you know, Andrean's going downstate again. They've been undefeated two years in a row now. I will do everything in my power on Lamar signs to give them some type of a send-off. Sue Reed from the Chambers asked any of the business owners that have on-premise digital to put up some type of good luck message to the guys going down there. That's quite an accomplishment. So wish the 59ers good luck Saturday.
Very good.
Excellent shot. I think that the fire department probably give them a little-
Yeah, we're gonna take a lot of time, we'll bring it back.
Thank you. Is there any tickets for any council people? No, you have to union your hats.
Okay, moving on to economic development, Councilman Garalcheck.
No report.
Still delays on Councilwoman Baron?
Yeah, I just want to touch base on the cap program that's moving forward. Again, we have enough per bench. We're probably, by the time it's all over with, we'll probably end up with four or five benches. The bike path has really taken off with all the ideas that we have in mind for the bridge and for the seating area, and that's all I have.
Okay, very good. Under town government reorganization, I have no report. Under the ADA compliance, I have just this to mention, with the redefining of Steffick Park, there will be access for people with disabilities with three to four cutouts for better mobility with the use of canes, walkers, scooters or wheelchairs. That is my report. Abandoned properties, Councilman Hardaway?
Thank you. A lot of stuff going on with that. I appreciate the committee that's working with me on this thing. I had a meeting today, that's two hours, good thing.
Thank you.
But, you know, the good thing is, is that there's a lot of interest in what we're doing, and I've been getting a lot of good positive feedback from all over Lake County with people interested in helping us in any way that they possibly can. Next week, when we meet on December 3rd at 10:00 a.m., Senator Lonnie Randolph will be in attendance, and we've sent out invitations to Hal Slager out of the Sherrville area, and also to Vernon Smith. Haven't heard from him yet, but the one guy that I met with today, he's a good friend of Hal's, and so he reached out to him also. So we're gonna, we're gonna be doing some things. We started out going one direction, hoping that we can help veterans, and that didn't really pan out the way we wanted, and so we looked at what else we needed to do, and what we need to do is these abandoned buildings, and there's a lot of flaws out there already on the books. We don't need to reinvent the wheel as far as the electrical component and all of that go, because there's already things out there. We just didn't know about them. And so we're hoping the next week when we meet, we'll have a better dialogue and continue to move forward, and this is really gonna help not only the town of Maryville, not only Northwest Indiana, but the entire state.
Yes.
So I think that, I appreciate the opportunity to serve as the chairman of this, and I also appreciate Gene and Don for the input that they have in this thing, and especially Gene loaning us Catherine to be the facilitator of our notes, to make sure that everything that we say is documented. So next Wednesday at 8:00 will is our next meeting.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment too. You know, it seemed like, that's one of the hardest committees I've ever been on in my life. You know, every time we go forward, there's like a little bit of roadblock, but doesn't mean we stop. We just keep going forward, just go run that roadblock, and that committee's been doing a good job, caring about some people in last week, like that. Some new ideas. I mean, there's nothing gonna stop us in that committee. We are gonna tackle this. If we, everything we do in this term, we are gonna get those abandoned houses done with them.
Thank you, Gene.
Okay, moving on to ordinances, first reading. Ordinance 14-35, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating monies within the Computer Training Center Fund for the year 2014, not included in the current budget, as it is necessary and prudent to provide these additional appropriations for the payment of certain obligations in the Computer Training Center Fund for a amount of $30,000 for other supplies for a total of $30,000.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Spann. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yes.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, seven to zero. Ordinance 14-36, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, amending ordinance 14-36 in fixing the salaries and pay for employees of the Town of Maryville, Indiana for the calendar year of 2015.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilwoman Baron. Roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yes.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, seven to zero. Moving on to second readings. Ordinance 14-33, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, creating an unsafe lighted property fund retroactive to September 4th, 2014, and transferring previous lien monies into said fund for the purpose of paying to board up, demolish such properties. Previous funds deposited into the general fund should go into this newly created fund in the amount of $5,011 deposited on September 4th, 2014 will be transferred.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. Is there any further discussion? Any public comments? Any public comments? Any public comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yes.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes, motion approved, seven to zero. Ordinance 14-34, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the LOT Local Option Income Tax Public Safety Fund for the year 2014, not included in the current budget. It is necessary and prudent for these additional appropriations for the 2014 salary raises resulting from the revenue of the local option income tax for public safety.
So move.
Pettit.
Motion by Councilman Spann, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Do we have any discussion? Public comment? Public comment? Public comment? Seeing no public comment, roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yes.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved, seven to zero. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution 14-55, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2014 budget within certain categories as there is a need to transfer certain monies in the Continuing Education Fund.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Whiting, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven to zero. Resolution 14-56, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2014 budget within certain categories.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spann, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven to zero. Resolution 14-57, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2014 budget within the local road and street fund.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Baron. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven to zero. Resolution number 14-58, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the repayment of a temporary loan.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Whiting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven to zero. Resolution 14-59, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing a temporary loan to fulfill monetary requirements.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, seconded by Councilman Spann. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven to zero. Resolution 14-60, a resolution concerning the holiday schedule for the calendar year of 2015.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spann, seconded by Councilwoman Baron. Do we have any discussion?
So, by Councilman Hardaway?
I'm sorry, Sir, Councilman Hardaway.
We sound-
That's okay, we-
That's the year.
He's a rental person.
That's the year. Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven to zero. Now we move on to the BZA actions. Petitioner Tender Love Home Services, LLC, please step up to the mic. Owner is Claire Haxama. Request is a special exception approval. The purpose for a proposed training facility for individuals with disabilities. Location, 7895 Broadway, Suite 0NP, zoning C-2, Community Commercial. Case number Z3OE14-1014. The date of the BZA action was October 22nd. The BZA did approve. It is for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only. Again, the petitioner must follow up with the State of Indiana for the variance if required for a change of occupancy, occupancy-institutional group to an AB occupancy business group. Welcome. And I do thank you for your service. It is a well-needed service to our people in our area.
Motion to approve with a correction.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilwoman Whiting. Yes, sir.
It's a deadline for town council action, January 20, 2014. Shouldn't that be 2015?
Yes, 2015.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, and with that correction, it is so noted.
Are there any conditions that we need to-
What the condition?
The condition, if approved, is again for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only.
And there's a second condition, Madam President?
The second condition is... Okay, again, the petitioner must follow up with the State of Indiana for the variance if required for a change of occupancy from occupancy-institutional group to AB occupancy business group, and that is the other condition.
Yeah, my motion's still good.
Okay, very good. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much again for all your services. Thank you, having a- You too.
Uh, yes, I can do that.
Great. Under old business, we have rental registration. Attorney John Buscemi, please.
The council has had a workshop and discussed the current, the new legislation that's been enacted by the State of Indiana that imposes significant restrictions on the town's ability to conduct its rental registration program and assess the fees as it has done in the past, and there was no official action taken at the workshop, obviously, because the nature of it was for discussion purposes, but if the council is prepared to do so at this time, as legal counsel, I would need direction from the council as to exactly what its desires are. Our options are either to amend the existing ordinance and impose the significantly curtailed fees that the state allows us to charge. Another option, although not desirable, that the council may wish to consider is abandoning the rental registration program as it exists, repealing it from the town ordinances. If that course of action is followed, we would need to make a determination what use is still permitted by the State Board of Accounts of the existing fees that we have in the fund at this particular time. So it's just open for discussion.
If we do the first one, what does that, what does that mean for us?
Well, Dorinda, with the limit imposed by the state now of $5 essentially per rental complex, based on your estimate, we would, under the new fee scheme, we would be collecting what total amount of fees per year?
About $4,900 per year.
All right. As opposed to what amount were we collecting, will we had the previously acceptable fee?
$200.
All right. So I guess one question would be, what functions can be performed?
You don't wanna know.
Under, for the, you said what amount again?
$4,000.
$4,900 per year.
Yeah, I noticed our FOP president and another officer just walked out. This is a problem for Joe's guys too. This is ludicrous. The next conversation after your committee, Richard, ought to be on this issue with our state delegation. This is ridiculous.
However, council members should remember, we did not, we did not, although we wanted to do so, we were prohibited by state law, we did not appropriate the use of these funds for salary supplements for our officers, although that's what we desire to do. We were operating the rental registration program.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I'll yield to the people that have apartments in there, large numbers of apartments.
And that would be me.
Yeah.
And I will tell you that I'm not too happy with this.
An option would be to continue the program, but you, the town, out of some other source of funds, which would be difficult, or might be difficult, would have to supplement the activities because we're only gonna be garnering about $4,900 per-
And if we choose-
$4,900 per-
John, if we choose to keep the ordinance in place the way it is and collect at the rate we are, we run the risk of one of these apartment complexes suing the town of Maryville?
You mean if we kept the current?
Yes.
Fees? We absolutely can't. Yes, there's no question we would be subject to potential suit, and we wouldn't have a defense because the state has essentially imposed, as the council members know, a fee limit of, based on lobbying by the apartment complex interest group, a fee limitation of $5 per complex.
Okay, Carol, so when the 85-year-old woman calls you from Senior Services and doesn't have heat in one of the apartments in Chrissy- doesn't have heat in one of the apartments in Chrissy's area, make sure you give them the state representative's names and number.
Well, because that has happened before we wanted this.
It's not just that. It's just not, it's just not the elderly person that has no heat in their house. It's these big complexes that have all the tenants living in there and the tenants feel like they're safe and they're not. You got fire.
Fire safety.
You got your fire safety, not just that. You have a risk of a fire breaking out in an apartment complex, in a large complex, and there's no working modem in place because nobody's changed the batteries because they leave it up to the tenants.
Yep.
And we don't have anybody now that can go in there and check any of this stuff. You have electricity that's hooked up, that's not hooked up the correct way and has a chance of, of getting a fire. You have doors that are blocked that don't need to be blocked, they're emergency exits. You have people living in different means because they think they have to because this is where they're living, because this is what they're paying for, and it's unacceptable.
Here's a, okay, here's, let me...
But we never made it mandatory.
I know, and that's, that's what I'm going to say, is that even if we approve the five bucks per unit, then we still, it's still by, it's complaint-driven. So if nobody complains, calls and complains about smoke detector not working or a doorway being blocked, door passage being blocked, then we're still sitting there having the same discussion and we still can't do anything because we still don't know about it, but we're still charging five bucks. So we, I mean, you know, if we're going to put some teeth in something, we have to put some, we have to say, and if this is not going to help us do it, but we have to say that it's not going to be complaint-driven, it's going to be driven by the fact that we've got all of these apartments and we need to be, even if we don't inspect every unit, inspect every building, to make sure that every building, that the smoke detectors in the hallways are operable and that door passage...
But now we've missed it. We've missed the boat.
Well, I understand.
The bell done sailed out the door because we didn't make it mandatory. Now they can hire their own inspector to come in and do their own units because they are that large.
I understand. But then, but they're still, if, if they're doing their own and they hire their own, then there's still a paper trail that says that I inspected this building and everything was right and the next day the building burned down. Then we have some, we have some tool in our toolbox to act against these people.
John, there's nothing in the legislation that defines... And I'll single them out. I, I, I don't really care. Uh, for example, in Edward Rose, uh, Berkshire, down in Chrissy's area off of Maryville Road, that's a commercial enterprise. It may be residential in use, but they're making money off those people. They're not a, Edward Rose ain't a not-for-profit, right? So what is the definition in the legislation as to how big does a complex have to be before it could be constituted as a, a commercial entity? Not a commercial land use and zoning, that's different, but...
As a business?
There's no, there's no...
Under the business life, which is where I'm going.
I know where you're going, yeah.
Under the rental registration statutes that the General Assembly just passed this session in twenty-fourteen, there's no differentiation pertaining to, uh, commercial or otherwise. It's, the, the statute is driven by whether the units and the buildings are on adjoining parcels. And if the units and the buildings are on adjoining parcels, we, as preposterous as it is, we can charge no, you could have five hundred units in ten buildings on five adjoining parcels or ten adjoining parcels. We can charge one five-dollar fee for that whole complex.
Yeah, that's called a community, an apartment community, yes.
Yeah, they've...
That's not answering Sean's question.
Well, in, in, in a way it does. I mean, they're, 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 they're not defining it. They're not, they're not taking into account the five hundred units that...
That's exactly right.
...are down there on Berkshire as opposed to Mr. Doolittle up here on Broadway.
I think we need to have a workshop and discuss what are, what are our options.
Yeah, because if we're going to do this again, it needs to be done right.
Well, yeah.
Now, I don't, unfortunately, I think our hands are tied, guys.
I, I think, I think right now that we're...
Oh, they are.
We're up against it. And I just think that for practical purposes, and like I said, I yield this to Chrissy and anybody else that's got a lot, large number of apartments, that, you know, we should just wash our hands of this thing now.
Well, as we, as we, uh, wash our hands and dry them in the towel, Rich, we need to throw the towel out to Karen and Chaz. And when we get calls in about complaints like this, it needs to get back to the legislators. You guys passed the law. You guys tied Maryville's hands. We wanted to do this. We wanted to get our police officers checking these things and pay them, and you guys don't want to let us do it. So it's your problem.
And then the other...
Far as I'm concerned.
And the other thing, and I know that this is, um, way outside of the box with this, that when every apartment complex raised everybody's rent...
Yeah.
To subsidize this thing. Now, are these people, are they going to go back and give these, and tell these people that we're going to reduce your rent by a hundred bucks a year? Even, it's only a hundred bucks a year, but at the same time, that's the right thing to do.
Interesting question.
That is the right thing to do because we knew going into this thing that they were going to raise their rent. And even when we reduced it to fifty bucks, they still collected around a hundred bucks.
They raised their rent, yes, they did.
So for you guys that's with pen in hand, that's what they need to do. They need to understand that they should go back and give these people a, say, January one, if the town of Maryville says that we're going to discontinue this, then we're going to reduce your rent by eight bucks a month.
Yes, Durinda?
I can express that we originally sent out in September the renewals, um, and then we ended up, um, hearing that we couldn't continue with the fifty dollars. So that fifty dollars that they were charging each rental unit only takes you through up until August of two thousand fourteen. So the fifty dollars that we collected, I mean, we haven't collected anymore.
Okay, but the, but the apartment owners are still collecting whatever they're, whatever they increase the rent, they're still collecting that money?
Yeah, I couldn't answer that.
Well, I, I can. They're still, they're still collecting that money.
Oh, absolutely. They're like a cut their rate.
No, let's be real about it. They're, they're collecting that money and I think that it's a shame that they continue to collect that money even though we say that we're going to suspend the program. It's wrong.
Durinda, I haven't surveyed other towns. Do you have a feel for, in response to the restrictive new law, do you have any feel for what other towns in similar situations to Maryville may have done?
There's not a lot of other towns that are doing this currently. Munster does it, and I think that they collect two hundred dollars for every three years, but they have an inspection tied to that. So every three years, they have to go through all their rental properties to do those, those inspections. Um, and I'm not familiar with any other community that has the rental registration. I know, um, Holbert does not.
Hammond still has theirs, and Hammond...
And I, I've not checked into it.
Hammond, I talked to the guy today. Hammond inspects every building. If you go across the state line in Illinois, Cayman City inspects every building, but I mean every apartment. They inspect everything. But see, that's all I got to say.
At this point, does it matter who's doing what?
No, it really doesn't, but I'm just, you know, I, I just think that if, if we're going to, you know, forty-nine hundred bucks a year is not a lot. And, oh, you know, and it's not going to even pay for any inspections that we do.
He would have stamped the mail out of the billing.
And unfortunately, Rich, this is about being a good neighbor and about the almighty dollar. And I don't want to put the batteries in the smoke detector in my five hundred units because that's going to cost me money that I can't put in my pocket as opposed to being a good neighbor in Maryville or Holbert or Highland or Hammond.
Right.
Uh, we, we, we tend to lose sight of that. And that is a shot at all the apartment owners. You can, that's too bad.
And I agree with you a hundred percent.
I bet you we could go into Berkshire, Centerwood, any of those and test the smoke detectors, and I can tell you probably over half of them would fail because they haven't changed the batteries.
You can go into the newer, the Maryville, whatever it is over there off of Grant.
Oh, yeah.
You know, there's, you know, Chrissy got a call from a lady over there. She moved into the apartment, the walls are cracking. There's air seeping through the windows.
Fire.
You know, it's, it, it, we, we could sit here all night and beat up on this thing.
Bruce brings up a point, though, John. We've got two hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars in there. Can, what do we, what do we do with that money? Can we continue to operate the program until the funds run out?
I think we can continue to operate the program within the confines of the state statute until the funds run out. We can't, we have to, we do have, if we're going to continue to operate the program, we do have to amend at least to reduce those fees.
Okay.
Because our fees contradict the current state law.
And I think the other issue you would have is if we cancel the program, what do we do with the two hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars? I mean, that's what it's collected for is a rental registration program. And, John, am I wrong? I mean, I don't think there's really much else to be able, unless you're interested to do with the money and...
It's a, it's a unique, it's a unique question. That's a State Board of Accounts question.
But, I mean, I know the chances are small, but if we could use these funds to run this program for the next one year, two years, maybe by then...
And if we didn't build the residence?
Maybe, maybe something by then, the state legislator does something, but at least it buys us some time.
And, yeah, and I'm saying that if we do that, John, we, do we, we don't have to attach a fee to it. We can just say we're going to keep this thing active with no fee until the money runs out.
Yes, or impose the five-dollar per rental complex.
And at least that money would help pay for most of your postage and time and those kind of things.
Okay, but then we have to pay close attention to it so that when the two twenty-seven runs out, then we got, then we got to be willing to cut our losses and say that, okay, we're going to be done. That, I mean, because once, once that two twenty-seven runs out, Bruce...
I understand.
It makes no sense at all to try to get that forty-nine hundred.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I just don't know what we, we would be able to do with the money otherwise.
Well, no, that's the right thing to do, and I support that.
The only idea I got on that one.
I'm just saying that we got to make sure that once that, once we get down to the last few bucks, that we're going to be done with that. We're going to come back in here and say that we're going to discontinue this program for all practical purposes. Otherwise, we're going to still be running the program, she's going to be sending out forty-nine hundred dollars worth of letters, and then that's all the money she's going to have.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Anything else on the rental registration? Questions, comments?
I, I have something, um, for John to check. Um, his name is Tobart.
Tobart.
Does the ordinances?
Phil Tobart.
He's got some, could you check and see where they're at in your staff? The, he's got some ordinance issues.
Is that, that's his violation letter?
Yeah.
And that's been, that's been taken care of, Mr. Tobart?
Oh, okay. Yeah. All right, that's all I have.
Very good. Do we have any new business? I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, Councilman.
Uh, the Union Park House, has that been transferred yet?
It's, has not been transferred. I contacted the title company today to set that for a closing.
Okay. Yeah, because I've had a couple of questions of people asking me when that house is coming down.
What is, what was our agreement? Can he get out of property before the closing, John?
He's already started cutting trees.
We've got a, uh, we have a release and hold harmless agreement that I want him to sign before he enters the property.
Oh, okay.
Simply holding the town harmless in the event that, uh, either he gets hurt, his contractors get hurt, or he causes damage by the activity. Other than that, he can have, uh, access pending the closing.
Is there a reason he hasn't signed it yet?
Uh, no.
He's cutting trees and stuff down in there.
I was not aware of that until just now.
I just found out today. If you've got that agreement, get it to me. I'll get it signed, John.
Yeah, let's get that signed tomorrow.
I'll get it to tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, anything else under new business? All right, public comments? Anyone here want public comments? Please come up to the mic and please state your name and your address.
Susan Finkie, one five seven zero, Holbert, Indiana, four six three four two. And I, too, am product of inspection neglect, so I understand. Um, what I am going to go ahead and refer to, especially with, uh, Councilman Hardaway has helped out tremendously. This is in regards to the Glenwood Manor, where it's on the border of Holbert and Maryville, and improving the aesthetics of our, uh, area. We've run into one, or actually three main issues. Which one of these addressed already with the parking and the snow, everyone getting ticketed two inches and above? So that was one of the main things. Also, too, with that in mind, um, parking on Fifty-Sixth Place, uh, it is the lot closest or the southwest corridor of Fifty-Sixth Place and Indiana Street. They actually have a commercial vehicle that should not be parked there, that is parked there about twelve hours out of the twenty-four hour day. Um, I believe, I know, according to the town of Highland, ten thousand pounds and plus is considered a commercial vehicle, and it's not allowed on residential streets. Uh, this truck is a duly Dodge and has a twelve-compartment car trailer that's attached to it that has never been ticketed. A lot of people don't notice it because of the time it arrives, as well as the time that it leaves early in the morning. So I feel that that needs to be addressed as well as, um, and I also know that it does require a CDL license in order to operate that. Another thing is on the corner of Fifty-Sixth Street, or I'm sorry, Fifty-Sixth Place in Mississippi going southbound on Mississippi, this is the turning lane going southbound, turning, um, towards I sixty-five where you have that incut, and people are actually parking on that corner of the street. I'm sorry, I do not have the address, but they actually park their cars where that's a turning lane. And those cars have been parked there consistently and have not been ticketed as well. So those are three main issues that have been, um, or I hope that are getting addressed. Another thing is regarding the grass and it extending above the legal limits and it being an eyesore. Uh, specifically within the main commons area where all the houses are back-to-back and they are, I want to say that grass is probably about two and a half to three feet tall at this moment. Every time they do cut, and my siding has been injured as a cause of it, thank God it hit the siding, and it did not hit my glass window because they do not use grass catchers. So a rock flew. I happened to be home on my lunch, and it hit my siding. So I have a nice big hole in the siding. Um, also, on the southwest corridor where it goes down into the retention pond, that also needs to be cut as well. It has not been cut since approximately July of twenty-fourteen. The third thing that we need to please address are the streetlights. Uh, we have yet to, we actually went ahead, um, thank you again for the street signs, but we have not went ahead and, um, obtained streetlights. It is very dark and a little unsafe. I was wondering if Councilman Hardaway, you know, possibly when those will be installed?
I, I don't know, but...
We've been in contact with the owner, probably...
Good luck.
All right, here, let me say this. Let me help you a little bit. Let's, uh, let's get the guy in. Let's get this guy in next week.
If he's in the country.
Big part?
If he's in the country.
If he's not in the country, his daughter is. I don't care who we...
Pilot, okay.
I'm easy to get along with. Whoever, whoever's willing to come take the whoopin', I'll give it to them.
Okay.
Here's a follow-up question, Rich, or to Durinda. Do we still have his bond in place?
Check that.
Cash his bond in, end of story.
Whenever we got to do, uh, and I appreciate everything that you've said, uh, the, the vehicle, is it parked there over the weekend?
Just a minute, please. We have to change our tape.
Go ahead.
Is it parked there over the weekend?
Yes, it is.
All right, okay.
Not during the day, in the evening.
All right. Joe, I know you don't, I know you got like a lot of stuff to do, but let's, uh, let's get it one time and send it...
If you could call when it's there, we'd appreciate it.
May I have a direct phone number?
Sure.
No.
I can address that also, too. Please.
It's seven six nine three five three one.
Seven six nine three five three one. And direct this to, I'm sorry, uh...
That's dispatch.
That's a dispatch.
You might call the regular police department, the other complaint, far as vehicles parking in the roadway, or a semi with a boat loading it down.
They need an address, man.
Will do, not a problem.
They'll send them... Right, and, and then just, whoever, whoever we got to tow it, let's just hook it. We tow it one time, it won't come back.
Will do.
Thank you.
And reverting back to the ambulance service, um, I don't know if that ever has been, I know it was an issue back when I needed ambulance service for my husband, um, but it always has been a dispute between the town of Holbert...
Probably with the, uh, the signal.
Correct.
Yeah, I remember if that dress is in that, that we fixed that, we, did we fix it or not?
Uh, well, I don't know because that was...
You haven't had to use the...
Two and a half years ago, my husband unfortunately...
Well, the ambulance and fire calls is directed to nine one one to Maryville.
Okay, there, he can...
I'm not sure.
There's the answer.
The fire that had happened, you all were there spot on, but my husband unfortunately passed away that night from cancer, so that's where it took them over twenty-five minutes to get the ambulance there. So that was that issue.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, fence regulations, um, is accordance to, or in regards to, uh, putting up a fence on your property, from what I've read, do you, does it have to be a foot or a foot and a half off the property line?
Right on the property line.
Okay, I did not know that because according to what I had read previously, that it actually was a foot to a foot and a half, I didn't know that it changed.
They need a building permit, too.
I'm sorry.
They also need a building permit for a fence.
Building permit for a fence permit, you can, that's in your property, your entire property, including your easement, however, it can't hinder any flow of drainage if it is in a drainage utility easement.
Okay, with that commons area, since...
The common area, that's, let us, we, we're going to talk to them, you know?
Okay.
It's kind of late in the year this year because of, uh, you know, but I got, I've gotten calls from Tina and, you know, that the whole group over there.
Correct.
And, uh, you know, we're aware of it, and that's why we're bringing them in. This is going to be the last time I sit down with them.
Okay, no problem. Will this be, um, a community meeting where we'll be able to attend?
You guys were invited to one last week, nobody showed up.
I'm sorry.
Two weeks ago.
Not know about it.
It was in the, it was in the town newsletter.
Okay.
You guys were invited to come to Regency Park, there were...
There was one lady there.
Huh?
There was one lady there.
Yeah, there's, uh, Donna was there.
Okay.
But that Donna was the only person there from your, from your area.
Oh, I don't know.
And I, and I purposely had newsletters hand-delivered to every residence out there because I know you guys don't get them, but we, we delivered, hand-delivered, Public Works, hand-delivered newsletter to every home out there.
I apologize, I may not have received it.
It, you, trust me, when we get, when, when we do the newsletter, I always schedule neighborhood meetings, so look on the back page at the bottom, and you'll see where, where